Well, it's six o'clock and good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July 9th meeting of the governing body. Call this meeting to order. If you will give your attention to Councilwoman Ortiz. She will provide the invocation and stand as you are able and then remain standing for the Pledge of Aides.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we come upon our Fiesta that we're so proud of, I thought it was fitting to ask Father Dan to come and give the invocation. Father Dan Cronado is the pastor of Our Lady of Guadalupe Church here in Topeka. He is originally from Costa Rica and was ordained in the U.S. for the Archdiocese of Kansas City in Kansas. He has previously served in three different parishes: Good Shepherd in Kansas City, St. Joseph and St. Catherine in Emporia, and he's now here. He has done bilingual ministry since he was in seminary. Today, he's going to lead us in prayer.
Good evening to all of you and your fathers and Holy Spirit. We give thanks, Lord, for all the blessings and gift that we received at every moment in our lives. There are signs to us of your constant presence, presence, care, and love for us. Today, we place ourselves in your presence and ask to bless and guide this city council in their decision-making. May they be open to your guidance. May they be inspired by the values of the gospel in all they do. May you continue to bless each one of us here present, to bless our city, to bless our families, and all of our efforts to serve your people. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Okay, first on the agenda is the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Padilla.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Valdivia Akla.
Here.
Ortiz.
Here.
Banks.
Here.
Kell. Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
All right, we have nine present with Councilmember Kell absent.
Move on to second item is presentations. Madam Clerk?
We have the first presentation, U.S. Department of Transportation RACE Grant and Braxton Copley Public Works Director is here to introduce.
Director?
Afternoon, Mayor and governing body. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Ally Weems, who is a superstar in the Public Works Department. She's our senior management analyst, and Ally put together the RACE grant application. And Ally is going to give you a little bit of information about the amazing grant that we were awarded.
Thank you for having me this evening, Mayor and governing body. Thank you, Braxton, for the introduction. I appreciate that. Today, I'll be talking to you a little bit about the RACE grant. So, RACE stands for Rebuilding American Infrastructure with Sustainability Equity. This is a program that's been administered by the U.S. Department of Transportation since 2009, under previous names including Tiger and Build. Its specific function is to serve projects that are surface transportation oriented with significant local impact. Traditional RACE projects are 20 to 80 cost share, 20% being the local match and 80% being the federal match. But this particular opportunity has offered us an opportunity to select our project area for historically disadvantaged and areas of persistent poverty, per the U.S. Census Bureau, at 100% cost share. So, this table right here represents the $25 million eligible funding we were able to secure through this program. The City of Topeka's project called Pathways for Progress is 49.42 miles of infill sidewalk through our historically disadvantaged and areas of persistent poverty. The map on the right represents what we submitted as a part of our application. Some of the key projects that are included in our proposal, just to go over a few of them, Northeast River Road from Crane to Emmett was included in our Phase 5 bikeways circulation study that just came out in March of 2024. The southeast segment, or Southeast California Avenue, from 10th Avenue to 10th Street, that's on the east side of the Topeka Cemetery. Central Highland Park, that's from California to Adams and from 21st to 29th Street, all of that infill area there. And northeast Norris Street, which serves the TRM Distribution Center, ICI Manufacturing, and the North Topeka Food Bank. Some key highlights I just wanted to mention here. To our knowledge, this is the largest competitive grant opportunity the city has received at the maximum allowable funding amount of $25 million. We were the top Kansas recipient in the 2024 fiscal year round, and we represent one of 14% of eligible applications that were awarded in this funding round at 14%. Lastly, I just want to highlight some support that we have received through our community. These are very consistent across the opportunities that we've applied for thus far, representing agencies in the county, in the state system, our federal representation. So, I just want to highlight that. Just thank you so much to our NIA representation, our CAC and ADA Advisory Board. And that's all I have, and I'll happily stand for any questions.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor.
Just great job. I mean, really great job in however you guys sought out the money and bringing in the money. This is what so many of us, you know, with having an aggressive grant writer, even more than one maybe eventually, I think we only have one, right? Right now, two?
We do have our grant program administrator, April Haven Hazen Schaefer. Sorry, I can speak today. She administers a lot of these opportunities on the management side, but we try to kind of have our ancillary arms out in each department, so.
And I'm just saying, this is exactly what's needed, to go fishing for those dollars, to be aggressive, to know how to write a good grant, to know how to tell the compelling story that is necessary for getting a grant. And, you know, I'm really excited with what we're going to see across multiple districts, but obviously, that's going to impact District 2. I know Councilwoman Hiller and myself share the, you know, the River Road, and to see the expansion, what is going to be done there is exciting. And I think once Oaklanders and even North Topeka folks find out about it, and folks that come in and out of Oakland from different areas, I think it's really going to give folks the understanding that that infrastructure improvements and those goals that we have for infrastructure are definitely impacting them. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, the River Road will be a transformative project.
Councilman Duncan?
Are any of the projects that we're looking at doing, were they already slated, for instance, in the CIP so that it will take them, I guess, out of there essentially, or having to fund those, whatever mechanisms we were going to use? Or are these add-on projects to things we already have in the CIP?
One of the projects along Golden was a project that we had built into the CIP that we will be able to reprogram that money for other projects, but the rest of these were truly projects for which we did not have funding. We had to be very intentional in terms of where we located these so that we maintain that 100% federal funding and not have to have a city manager.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller, and then Councilwoman Ortiz.
Just want to echo what she said. This is so much fun, and we've needed to do that fundraising for a long time, and it's just great to see that process happening. Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. I just want to echo as well. I know for a long time, we've talked about California and pulling those people out of the street and pulling those wheelchairs, people that are in wheelchairs, handicap, out of the street. So, I'm very, very excited about that because we never could find funding. So, thank you. I've been telling our NIAs that this affects, but it affects everybody. It really does. So, my question is, when will we get started on 10th Street?
So, first step is we need to get the grant agreement executed, and then after that, we need to develop our RFP to get our consultant on board to get started on the design, and then we need to get these projects out on the street to bid and get started in construction because the time, the clock will be ticking in terms of when we have to get all that encumbered.
Well, I look forward to the ticking clock. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My compliments to both of you, Braxton, for being that support and that supervisor that encourages and sees that talent and supports that talent and what they can do for the city. And my compliments to you for being so thorough and aggressive to get such a large reward for the City of Topeka. Both of you, thank you very much. Anyone else? Thank you again. Okay, we'll move on to item number three. Madam Clerk?
A is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez, naming banks and savings institutions that are designated as depositories for all City of Topeka accounts and authorizing signatures and rescinding City of Topeka Resolution Number 9524. B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez, authorizing the City of Topeka's participation in the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool and authorizing signatories and rescinding City of Topeka Resolution Number 9490. B are minutes of the regular meeting of July 2, 2024, and there are no applications.
Okay. We've heard the consent agenda is read. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, second by Councilwoman Miller. Can we do the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
Ortiz. Banks. Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Hofer.
Yes.
We have nine yes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carried. Move on to agenda item number four, action items. The clerk will read.
A is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez, in accordance with the Section 1860010 of the Topeka Municipal Code, approving a conditional use permit to allow for the expansion of a cultural facility on property located at 4400 Southwest 10th Avenue, Kansas Children's Discovery Center, and zoned R1 Single Family Dwelling District, all being within the City of Topeka, Shawnee County, Kansas.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the governing body. Dan Warner, our Planning Division Director, will take us through this item.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, governing body, the applicant is requesting this CUP to amend the existing CUP, sorry, to allow expansion of the exhibit hall and to accommodate childcare and services associated with the Discovery Center. The CUP is necessary because that property is zoned single family, so we need a little extra approval to allow that use. As you can see on the site plan on the screen, the applicant intends for the expansion to occur on the north side of the property, along with some additional parking. The applicant held the Neighborhood Information Meeting, Planning Commission held a public hearing, and approved the CUP at their June meeting. Staff recommends approval as well. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any question for Councilwoman Hofer?
Not so much a question as, I was on Planning Commission when this first came through, and we were concerned, we didn't know how much growth there was going to be with this project, and at the time, 10th Street was not slated to be widened. It was just going to strictly be two lanes, no sidewalks, no curbs. And our group really pushed for them to do that, and City Council stepped up and moved it up in order. And one of the things everybody's been concerned about is traffic that will be coming out of the Discovery Center. I don't think when they started this, they really, they hoped they would get to this point. They didn't know it would come, and they didn't know it'd come this quick. So, I'm excited for this expansion, and if no one has any objections, I'm going to move for approval.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Hofer, second by Councilwoman Hiller. Roll call vote, please.
We have ex parte.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's the one we have tonight. Prior to voting, each member of the governing body who has engaged in any ex parte communication with any individual either in favor of or against the matter being considered must state that that communication occurred and indicate that even in light of having engaged in the communication, they were able to fairly, objectively, and impartially consider the measure based only upon the evidence provided on the record. The record includes the Planning Commission minutes, the staff report, and its attachments, the public comments made during the Planning Commission hearing, and similar relevant information related to the matter. So, at this time, I am asking the governing body if they have any ex parte communication to reveal. Councilwoman Miller.
It wasn't directly about this. It wasn't directly about this, but my wife is a recent hire of the Discovery Center, so I abstain from voting on this.
Any other ex parte communications? Last time, any other ex parte communications? That's how I'm voting. Okay, also, with this item, I want to make sure that I got this right here. There are voting options for this item. One is to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation. Two, reject or amend the Planning Commission's recommendation. Or three, remand back to the Planning Commission, votes are required, six votes are required of the governing body. So, with those options available, Councilwoman Hofer, do you still want to make your motion? Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve, and the second was Councilwoman Hiller. Okay, take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
Ortiz. Banks.
Yes.
Miller.
Abstain.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
All right, we have eight yes, with Councilmember Miller abstaining, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Motion's carrying. We'll move now to action item B, or V. Madam Clerk?
B is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez, annexing land to the City of Topeka, Kansas, in accordance with KSA 12527, located approximately 380 feet to the west of intersection of Northwest 25th Street and Northwest Button Road, on the north side within the unincorporated Shawnee County, Kansas, and adjacent to the City of Topeka corporate limits, and said land being annexed for all city purposes.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Dan Warner, Planning Division Director, will take us through this item.
Dan?
Mayor, governing body, as noted, the applicant requests annexation of land that they own near the corner of Northwest 25th and Northwest Button Road. The applicant is currently constructing 120,000-square-foot manufacturing building. Property is zoned industrial currently in the county, and that zoning will continue upon annexation. In addition, the applicant has platted the property. The property is contiguous to the city boundary on the south side, and the owner has consented to annexation. In this case, this type of annexation can be approved by ordinance by the governing body. Planning Commission reviewed this annexation for consistency with the comprehensive plan and determined that it was. Staff recommends approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dan? Having, Councilwoman Hofer?
Dan, I have one question. There is a box on 25th Street that is blocked out. I believe that was a house. Is that not included in this property?
That is not part of this annexation. It wraps around the house that's currently there.
Okay.
The development's happening on that large piece of property, so that's what we're dealing with.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
For the questions? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Miller?
I heard that.
Sorry. Second by Councilman Dobler. Geez. Take a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
And Councilmember Hiller.
Yes.
We have nine yes, the motion carries.
Move on to action item four, C, if the clerk will read.
C is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez, notifying the county clerk of a proposed intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for the City of Topeka's 2024 budget, the proposed tax rate, and the date, time, and location of the public hearing to consider adopting a budget that exceeds the revenue neutral rate.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the governing body. Josh McGarney, Budget Manager, will take us through this item and the discussion.
Taylor, real quick, we had a presentation scheduled. Can you pull that up? So, tonight, what we're going to go over is, we thought it'd be a good reminder for the public and for the council on mill levy information and what the revenue neutral rate is that we're required to do. So, that's what we're going to go through real quick. So, the mill levy is what sets our, the mill levy rate is what sets our property tax collections throughout the year. So, property tax collections are a huge portion of the city's general fund budget, which is about 30%, and it funds general services such as police, fire, public works, planning, legal, finance, et cetera. And so, one mill in terms of 2025 is 1.4 million dollars, thereabout. And all of this information is provided by the county. So, the county does the assessments, and then they provide the revenue neutral rate. Now, what the revenue neutral rate is, is that caps what our tax dollars collected is. So, if we, in 2023, for example, if we collected $50 million in property tax, the revenue neutral rate would be us, would be the new mill levy rate that sets us at collecting $50 million in 2024. So, it means you cannot collect any more taxes, or property taxes from the public if you do not exceed the revenue neutral rate. And then tonight, the council will vote whether to possibly exceed RNR. They will set the maximum mill levy rate, and they will set a public hearing date, which will be September 10th of this year. So, a little information about just property taxes in general. So, our current mill levy is 36.952. That goes into three different funds. Our general fund, which I stated earlier, funds services like police, fire, and public works. Our debt service fund, so when we bond a project, that helps pay for fire trucks, we bond, any sidewalks, we bond, et cetera. And then our special liability fund, which is a small part of it, which is our legal fees and things like that. So, in 2024, or for this budget cycle, sorry, if we had, did not exceed the revenue neutral rate and we kept it at the revenue neutral rate, the city would collect 50.85 million in property taxes. Now, if we exceeded the revenue neutral rate, that would allow us to, in state of our current mill rate, that would allow us to capture 2.3 more million dollars while keeping our current mill rate. And so, that's where the $53 million comes from. And then what's proposed tonight, and that's just simply the high watermark, that doesn't necessarily mean that will be what is approved in September, is the maximum mill rate, which is four higher than the current mill rate, which would allow us to collect 5.8 million higher over the current mill rate, or about 8 million higher than the RNR rate. Now, I just want to be very clear that that's the maximum possible mill rate. There was precedent sent last year where we submitted a mill rate of 38.952 to the county, but in September, when we held the budget hearing, we actually lowered it by two. So, it has happened before where we submitted a revenue, or submitted a mill levy rate to the county and then lowered it two months down the line as more information and more tightening in the budget came to fruition. So, and I'm not going to read every single number on this slide, but I wanted to give the council and the public an idea on how much with each mill rate and appraised value of a property a taxpayer would pay. So, I'll go through the first column. So, for $150,000 appraised property, at the RNR rate, a taxpayer would pay, just to the City of Topeka, obviously, there's other taxing entities like Shawnee County, the library, the MTA, et cetera. A taxpayer would pay $609 at the revenue neutral rate. At the current mill rate we're at, it would be about $27, sorry, $17 higher at $637. And then at our maximum mill levy rate, they'd pay $706. Now, for each mill shifted for $150,000 property, that's about $17.25 for $150,000 appraised property. And then the same rationale goes on as the property value increases, et cetera. Obviously, increased appraised value means more taxes paid in terms of the mill levy. So, on the next item, there's a petition, and just a little information about RNR and the petition. We've determined that due to how the public vote is structured by the state and the county, it would be virtually impossible to ever increase the mill levy rate for the next 10 years. So, if we had our current RNR rate for the next 10 years, what was back on Slide 2, or Slide 3, sorry, we'd be locked in at property taxes of $50.85 million for the next 10 years. Now, we know expenses only go up over time over the next 10 years, and leaving our second highest revenue source behind sales tax flat would only make us rely on volatile revenue sources like franchise fees and sales tax even more than a more stable revenue source like property taxes. And then of the general fund, a lot of public safety, a lot of public works, a lot of tangible benefit in the community, so that is the, would be a substantial, that could lead to substantial reduction in some services there if we could not capture the valuation increases from the revenue neutral. And then finally, like I said earlier, if we had our current, if today was September 10th, and we had our current mill levy, and we exceeded RNR, that would allow us to capture the appraised, the increased appraised value of $2.3 million in '25. And with that being said, that's kind of just some information we had about the revenue neutral rate. Like I said, tonight is just approving the high watermark. It can come down in September 10th, and it sets the public hearing date and allows us to extend the budget for another month as opposed to not voting to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
And Mayor, if I may?
City Manager?
I want the governing body, and I want the public to understand the purpose of this item is to set the maximum mill rate of four, four additional mills. I will, in the spirit of transparency, share that going into the FY25 budget process, we are facing about a $15 million deficit just at the onset. Now, we're not expecting the mill increase to fully fund that deficit. We will be looking at other revenue sources. We will be looking at potential reductions, maybe looking at vacancies that have been vacant for an extended period of time, but we will be using all of that as a combination to address that budget deficit. We also do have approximately $9.7 million in our unappropriated reserve fund. So, it's going to be a combination of everything that I just mentioned that we will have to evaluate and consider to address that shortfall and ensure that we have a sustained budget moving forward. Thank you.
Questions for City Manager? Councilman Duncan?
First is Josh. I didn't see those slides online or in my packet. Could we get copies of those?
Yep, I can definitely, I can email them, and we can put them online, and I can send you a link to where they're at online as well.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry about that.
No, it's fine. Couple of things. Just going to reiterate a few things Josh said. This is not a vote to exceed, to stay, not stay revenue neutral or to exceed revenue neutral. It is setting our hearing, which will be held in September, which will be a public hearing, and at that point, we will take a vote and make a determination as to whether we will or will not exceed revenue neutral. I'm going to vote yes tonight on this, even though I have concerns with it, and I've already told the city manager this, and one reason I'm going to vote yes is so that we hold the hearing and people can understand the process. We also have a new city manager, and he would like the ability to provide some various budget, different budgets for us to see what those would look like so we can have a conversation both amongst ourselves, with staff, and with the public about what each level looks like. So, for that, I'm going to vote yes. I will say, and I said this last week to them, I will not support a budget that hits 40 mills. So, that's a nonstarter for me, which is why I don't like, would like to vote no some whole night because I think that's a little high as a goal, but out of those reasons and a respect for that request to give us some options, I'll vote yes. It is not an indication of where I will end up when we get to that revenue neutral hearing or as we go through the budget process. My goal is always to keep, and I know it's everybody's goal, but to work hard to keep that mill levy low, and I know that's, every person in the room has that desire, including the city manager. But I do want to clarify that process as to, and just end with, as Josh said, we started with a little bit higher watermark last year, and we ended up lowering the mill levy from the previous year. So, I think it can be done if we hunker down, and that's why we've got several months of this budget process, internal discussions, external discussions with the public, and then several hearings coming up. So, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a motion to start with and then a question after that. So, I would like to move on line 23. Currently reads the governing body. So, I would like to move on line twenty-three. Uh, currently reads, the governing body adopts a proposed tax rate of forty point nine five two mills. I would like to lower that to thirty-eight point nine five two mills. That's still two mills above our current rate for this year, and as Councilman Duncan said, there's really no way we're gonna pass a forty mill increase, or increase the mill levy to forty. So, let's just start with something a little bit more reasonable, uh, thirty-eight point nine five two.
That's a motion.
That's a motion.
Is there a second for his motion? Deputy Mayor?
Second.
Okay, second. We'll vote on Councilman Dobler's motion. Uh, city manager.
Um, Mayor, if, uh, just for clarification, uh, the two, two-mill reduction, uh, results in about two point eight, two point eight million dollars less.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, where the four, where the four mills would get us, what, five point?
Five point two.
Five point two.
Five point six, yeah.
Right. Um, so I just, uh, just wanted to, um, state that for the record. Uh, it's about a two point eight million dollar difference. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, we had a motion and a second. Uh, Councilman Dobler keeps throwing his sign out. Any further discussion? Okay. Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
And Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes the motion carries.
Mayor. Councilman Dobler.
Thank you. Just a question for the city attorney, and I'm not sure you can answer this tonight, but appreciate if you would look into it. Can we designate that property tax revenue can only be spent on a certain portion of city government, and I'm thinking public safety in this case? Could we only designate property tax for police and fire, for instance? Is that possible under state law?
So, to clarify, you would want property tax to only be spent in certain areas rather than sales tax and franchise fees, for example, that come into the general fund. So, you wanna segregate out property tax into its own fund that's used to pay for X, Y, and Z.
Yes.
Um, I will look into it further to confirm. My initial reaction is that, yes, you should be able to, using home rule, uh, the budget law is all about cash basis and just making sure that dollar for dollar, we have what we spend, and we don't go into debt. Um, but I think you should be able to do it with funds under our home rule authority, but I'll double check.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to follow up. What we're doing really is kicking off, and we've got some folks following who are really gonna raise some issues as well. Can we share with the public, and also with us, I'm not having my one-on-one on budget till later this week, so I don't have these answers yet. Um, in the past, we, uh, I'm thinking about both public input opportunities for us, for us to hear from the public, as well as for them to hear what we're learning. Um, in the past, we've done some pretty extensive series of budget hearings, so that we've had a chance by department to really get a presentation and get brought up to speed, raise issues, and, and have time to ask questions. Are you looking at a, at a pretty substantial series of hearings for us this year?
Yeah, so we're kicking that off, um, at the last meeting in July, and then through the month of August, and through the, through the month of September. And then, if we need to add additional dates, we can. Just with the inner-city visit, or, or, uh, in Boise next week, and it being canceled, that's why it's been delayed.
So, we'll have a published list of not only the times, but also hopefully the, the subject matter, so people kind of know what department's rolling up, or?
Yeah, at the, at the council meetings, yeah, there'll be a slate of police and fire on one night, for example, then inter, internal services like legal and finance is another example for another night.
Good. I, I think we all react really well to that process.
Yeah, no, the, the process will be the same as it was last year.
And could you also share, um, what those public hearing dates? I know they already started, but if the public was interested in knowing when and where they could come?
Yeah, I, I don't have them off the top of my head, but I can shoot them, uh, to the city manager for the announcements tonight.
Well, I've got them.
Oh, you got them, okay, yeah, yeah.
While we're on the subject, there's one tomorrow, the tenth, from seven-thirty to eight-thirty PM at Crestview Community Center. There's one on the fifteenth, from six-thirty to seven-thirty at the Oakland Community Center, on July seventeenth, from six to seven PM at Hillcrest Community Center, and on July twenty-second, from six to seven at the library. So, those will include a, at least a brief presentation and overview, and then question and answer, correct? And these will be published so that people can, can see, easily find where they are.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Something that we asked for, that, just so everybody knows, they're set up to be in different parts of town, but if people can't come to the one that's close to them, people are welcome to go anywhere, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything further? Okay. Well, we've, uh, taken our vote. Thank you very much again. Reach state, when is that?
Mr. Mayor, you've only voted on the motion, not the actual adoption of the resolution.
All right. So, is there a motion to adopt?
The resolution as amended.
The resolution as amended by Councilman Dobler.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to adopt, uh, approve by Councilman Miller, second. Second by Deputy Mayor. Roll call, please.
All right. Councilmembers Bank.
Yes.
Banks, sorry. Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Mayor Padilla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
And Ortiz. All right, we have nine yes the motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, move on to action item four D. If the clerk will read.
D is an ordinance, ordinance submitted pursuant to initiative and referendum statutes.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. Um, Honorable Mayor, members of the governing body, Amanda Stanley, our city attorney, will take us through this item.
And you do have individuals signed up for public comment. Would you like those before or after, Mr. Mayor?
Um, why don't you go ahead right now?
Okay. Um, well, this is an ordinance submitted by the initiative and referendum. For the public's, um, awareness, this is a state law that's a very old state law. It goes back quite a ways in our Kansas history. It's been used quite a few times by various cities and various places, uh, including in Topeka itself. Um, so, this is a process by which citizens can ask for an ordinary home rule ordinance to be passed by either election or by the governing body after submission of a petition. Um, there are several steps in statute that have to be followed. So, on February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, Earl McIntosh submitted his, the enclosed petition in your packet to the Office of the County Counselor pursuant to KSA twenty-five thirty-six oh one, which requires the County Counselor's Office provide an advisory opinion as to the legality of the form of the question. Only the form of the question is evaluated by the County Counselor's Office at that, um, at that time. He then has to issue a formal opinion as to the form of the question. Um, he did that on or around February twenty-seventh. Um, so, he issued that written advisory opinion that the form of the question appeared to meet the statutory requirements. That kicks off a timeline for which petition signatures have to be granted, which we are within that timeline for petition signatures to be granted. Um, in a city of the first class, such as Topeka, twenty-five percent of the electors who voted at the last preceding city election, um, must be collected, and then verification of the signatures has to be completed by the Election Commission Office. Um, that packet was turned over to the city clerk yesterday on July eighth. Um, and you can look at the Election Commissioner, that's all in open record. It shows how many signatures, um, were obtained, as well as which ones were kicked out because they lived in a different city, or they're confused on where they live, various things, or you signed it at various places. Um, so, enough signatures were submitted. Um, once the Election Commissioner confirms where the signatures, it is then submitted to the city clerk. Um, part of the reason for the public's knowledge on why this suddenly appeared on agenda is that there are very tight timelines under the statute. So, from the time it is submitted to the city clerk, um, there are only twenty days that the governing body has to act on it. So, this is our only meeting before the thirtieth, which is outside the twenty-day window. So, that is why you are seeing it so quickly on your agenda. So, there are really, um, in statute, there are two options, but in reality, there are three when you look at case law. Um, the first option is to pass the ordinance without altercation within twenty days after it's been submitted to the city clerk. Um, in your packet, the ordinance was submitted in full on the petition. A blank sheet of paper was there. So, the ordinance was submitted there. You can read it on top of the petition. Um, it was submitted in its entirety, as well as the petition with the necessary number of signatures to the city clerk, with certification of those signatures. So, you can pass it. You are not allowed to amend or alter it in any way, so you would have to pass it in its original form. The second choice under law is to call a special election unless a regular city election is scheduled within ninety days, and submit the proposed ordinance to the city electors. There is a third option, however, because this ordinance, initiative, and referendum cannot be used on any type of ordinance. It can only be used on legislative matters. It cannot be used for ordinances of administrative matters. There's also case law that talks about how it cannot be used for unconstitutional ordinances. Um, and there's good public policy for that. Um, a city's home rule authority is pretty broad. I'm the biggest lover of home rule that there is, but there are limitations to our powers as cities, and those come straight from the Constitution. Um, so, the ordinance in front of you, uh, what it asks to do, um, is, uh, it says that the city annually, as Josh just told you, establishes an annual increase in revenue from property taxes on private, commercial, and agricultural properties, shall not exceed the revenue neutral rate without obtaining the public consent through a vote. It's, defines the revenue neutral rate the same way that it's defined in statute as the rate that generates revenue equal to the previous year. And then, it has the public voting requirements in section two, which states that any proposed increase in property taxes above the revenue neutral rate shall require approval through a public vote held during a scheduled election. Um, it states the process that that would occur, such as the city council will present the proposed increase and the terms of aggregate and percentage to the public with transparent information detailing the reasons and impact of the per tos, tax hike. And then, it talks about the public vote outcome, and the event that the public does not authorize an increase beyond the revenue neutral rate, the city of Topeka is obligated to reduce the mill levy to maintain its levels at a revenue neutral level, and then compliance that this, um, to ensure compliance, that the finance department is supposed to ensure compliance with the ordinance, and that the implementation of any tax increase or reduction in mill levy as determined by the public vote shall be enforced in the subsequent fiscal year. Um, so, that is what the revenue, the ordinance, uh, requests to do. So, one of my jobs as city attorney is to analyze the ordinance and give you your legal options on that. And you do have three legal options. One, you could pass it in its current form. Two, you could pass to an election. Um, however, uh, while KSA twelve dash thirty thirteen provides this broad mechanism for the public to pass ordinances by petition, these are ordinary ordinances that are being passed. So, they're being passed pursuant to our constitutional home rule authority. So, um, one of the things we have to look at is whether or not, as a city council, it's even something that you legally have the authority to do. Um, so, home rule, our powers are set out in Article twelve, Section five of the Constitution, and one of the limitations on that power comes from Article twelve, Section five B, which specifically states, um, that cities shall exercise their determination of their local affairs and government by ordinance with referendums only in cases prescribed by the legislature. That has been interpreted to courts to say, we can't pass ordinary ordinances that call for elections that are not specifically called for in state law. Um, so, this ordinance, as it's written, calling for an election, does exceed your legislative authority that constitutional home rule gives you. So, it is not a constitutionally valid ordinance. Uh, it exceeds your authority. So, one choice that you have with something that is not constitutionally valid, in my opinion, is to do nothing. You would let this motion die for a lack of a second. Um, and then, it would not be forwarded on to election, and you would not have to pass an unconstitutional ordinance. Additionally, um, in analyzing this ordinance, uh, even if you could find, a court could find that it constitutionally passed mustard, um, muster, uh, KSA twelve thirty thirteen is not applicable to administrative ordinances. So, even if this was a constitutionally valid ordinance, the subject matter of it falls under the test that the Supreme Court has found for administrative ordinances. And that's for a couple different reasons. That test comes from McAllister versus City of Fairway. It's a four-part guideline test that the Kansas Supreme Court, um, established to guide us on what is legislative versus what is administrative for this law. And so, some of the reasons that this appears to be an administrative ordinance is that it attempts to execute a law, um, that exists already. And so, we already have state statute that governs the revenue neutral rate. It's very specific as to timelines on how a governing body exceeds state law. Um, it's also very specific about how the next fiscal year has to be set, how you do budgets for fiscal year, um, cash basis, when you can reduce, when you cannot. Um, so, it does appear to attempt to execute an existing law, which would make it an administrative function. It also involves decisions regarding the budget, which, um, courts have found require specialized training. Um, and finally, it also involves an issue of statewide concern in which the legislature has delegated decision-making to you as a governing body. Um, those are some of the reasons, um, that we feel like this meets the test of administrative. Um, so, we do feel like there are legally, uh, two different reasons. Um, why my recommendation would be that it not, uh, be passed tonight by you as a governing body, and that it not be passed on to the electorate. Um, I do not, in my legal opinion, feel that it is a constitutional ordinance, and I do feel like it is an administrative function. Um, but I am happy to stand for any questions you may have. Um, so, those are your three choices today. Pass the ordinance in its current form, unamended. Send it to a vote of the public at a special election. Um, or three, uh, let the ordinance die for lack of a second because of constitutional deficiencies and the possibility, uh, that strong possibility that it is an administrative ordinance, not subject to the statute at all.
Thank you, city attorney. Uh, we do have a couple people who have signed up to speak on this item. Uh, first, I have here Earl McIntosh. Mr. McIntosh?
I'll be, I'm just saying, I'm just saying my petition doesn't. Thank you. This isn't part of my testimony, but I completely disagree with Amanda. I like Amanda very much. Have respect for her. I've talked with her before, and she knows that. But, uh, we are, ordinance is legislative. It is constitutional. Um, you don't even have to follow state law. It's only a suggestion. Uh, the property taxes, for example, Schnute, Kansas, they did away with their property taxes. They just collect them, uh, through their, uh, through their electric bill. So, um, you do not have to follow, uh, state law. You don't even have to use the state law. It's just a suggestion. And you've, and you've, uh, monitor, or, you have passed other ordinances dealing with business property taxes, um, over sixty-five, get a discount. So, you have changed ordinances. You have other ordinances that you have gone beyond state law as well. Um, but I, I'll go ahead and start here. I just respectfully disagree with Amanda. My name is Earl McIntosh. I helped organize the petition, tax petition. Several hundred volunteers from all over their city assisted me. We collected over five thousand four hundred signatures. These signatures represent all cultural backgrounds, political parties, and income classes in our city. We collected signatures from every neighborhood and business district in Topeka. We didn't miss any part of the city. Mr. Mayor, if you're looking for one issue to bring the city together, it's property tax relief. Mr. Mayor, I want you and the council to know why we started this petition. The first reason is, you haven't been listening to us. For the past five years, we've been begging for help. Property taxes have created an immense burden on homeowners. Inflation is out of control, and it's affecting every resident in our city. Since you haven't taken note of our concerns, we feel need to empower ourselves. We love the city of Topeka, but we for, but we must fight back against the relentless increase in our property values and our property taxes. I see tonight, our new city manager, Dr. Perez, this nice man, is requesting the city to go above revenue neutral. This is unbelievable on our, our part. The citizens of Topeka don't have the luxury of going above revenue neutral. Most homeowners in Topeka are now revenue negative, and more negative with each passing year. This, I'm gonna say this one slow. The city can no longer brag that they have raised, they haven't raised our property taxes. They can't blame our property tax increases on rise in home valuations. The city can no longer use that excuse because you have the opportunity to lower our mill levy to rein revenue neutral. We request that you vote down going above revenue neutral and lower our mill levy. We request that you vote down going above revenue neutral and lower our mill levy. Mr. Mayor, I brought our petition's signatures with me tonight. They're sitting right there, 5,400 of them, citizens of Topeka. And I do want to mention that 4,500 of them got certified, but we acquired 5,500. I think that's important. It's one of the largest petitions ever gathered in the history of Topeka. It's not the largest, it's one of the largest. The First Amendment to the Constitution of the United States says we have the right to petition our government for a redress of grievances. I am here tonight to tell the council, registered voters of Topeka are grieved about property taxes. The signatures that I have right there are cry for help. I have the utmost respect for this council and our elected officials. I appreciate all you do for a city. I really mean that. But if you ignore this petition and don't treat it with the respect and attention it deserves, it will bring shame to the city. Nothing can speak louder than this petition. We need property tax relief, having a public vote in order to raise our property taxes is the right thing to do for our city. Josh gave a good presentation here. He's a good guy. He said that, may I just finish my statement?
You have a minute.
Okay. Josh gave a nice presentation, but he was incorrect on one thing. If you pass our ordinance, which we recommend you pass immediately, would not lock in the revenue neutral rate for 10 years. It goes to a public vote. It's as simple as that. All we want is a public vote. We want to partner with you on our property taxes. Right now, people are being driven out of their homes. I sell insurance, home insurance. Every month, elderly are in my office, lived in their house for 50 years and have to move out because when their spouse dies, they can't afford to live in the house they lived in. That's not fair. And so we have lots of renters. They're getting their rates increased. Each year, it's built into their contract. If their property tax gets raised, they automatically get a rent increase, and that has gone up significantly year after year. They have to move. We have people. Okay, that was it.
Would you like an extension of time?
No, I'm good. I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I just encourage the council to pass our amendment immediately. It's a very common sense one. We just want a public vote. That's it. It's nothing more than that, to raise our property taxes.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I have a second person signed for this item, Anell Griffith.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. I want to start out by just speaking in very general principles. And let's be optimistic here. If we create a better tax environment in Topeka, in Shawnee County, in our state, people are going to want to live here. People are going to come in, that's going to generate more revenue, and that's what we need. Right now, I too am hearing the stories of people taxed out of their homes. Now, for me, increasing property taxes means less discretionary income. Makes paying for college a little harder for my son, you know, less gifts at Christmas time, fewer summer vacations. But for others, it can mean having to decide between medicine and food. This is a big deal, and I agree with Earl. He's worked so hard. There are people crying for help, and this petition is a cry for help. One of the most attractive things about living in Kansas and living particularly in Topeka is the relatively low cost of living. But if we're taxing people out of their homes, if we're continuing to increase property taxes through the various parts of the equation, we are shooting ourselves in the foot. We are negating that benefit. It's so important that we make a better tax environment for our citizens. And so again, I remind you of your core responsibilities, particularly as city government, you know, our public safety, our roads, our water, our infrastructure. I want to pay for those things, right? But wherever you can cut the fat, and I know it's not easy, I get it, but any pet projects, man, get it privately funded, like downtown. Do what you can to help people live a good life here in Topeka so we bring more people here. They don't want to tax people beyond their means, and it's happening. Now, this petition is not our ideal way of doing public policy. It took a lot of effort, a lot of work. We're not here for, we don't want to cause a fight, but we feel like for some people, we're fighting for them to stay in their homes and to be able to just afford to live here. We want to bring more people here. So let's do what we can. Let me remind you that the ability to acquire, keep and sell private property is a basic human right. It's a human right against theft, and it's a mark of a free people. If we continue to charge people more to live in their homes so that they might get taxed right out of it, that is theft, and that is not the mark of a free people. So you have a tough job on your hands. Does that mean one more minute? Okay, great, I'll finish up. So again, people who own their homes, people who rent, the cost is getting passed on to renters just the same. And I've heard at the Shawnee County RNR hearing, a couple, at least a couple landlords say, hey, my renters are going to suffer. Please do not go above revenue neutral. We know what it is as individuals in this tough economy to have to cut our spending. So I'm begging you smart folks to find a way to get those core functions done for city governments without exceeding revenue neutral. Somehow, somehow give us the tax relief, the better tax environment that we need again. So we drive more people to our community instead of driving them away. Stay in your lane, keep the public sector and the private sector separate by all means. And I did email, I'll finish, I emailed you. Oh, well, Ms. Clerk, I emailed you. I know that'll be passed on. There's an actual link. ABC News interviewed me earlier last month. It was a nationwide story. It's a big deal all over the U.S. That's my point. So I encourage you in that email to read my testimony, if you'd be so kind. Look at the link and read the comments on that YouTube video. People all over saying, hey, we need to break, this economy's tough. Help us elected officials. And that's what we're asking of you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With regards to this item, I'd like to offer this. As we all know, we are all aware of the petition. It's been in the news, and everybody's been talking about it. And the petition is calling for revenue neutral rate increase decision to be turned to a public vote. I would like to discuss the full implications of what the outcomes could be if the RNR vote goes to the public and does not pass. The tax increase is used to raise funds for critical city infrastructure. We use this money to fix our roads, as well as pay our workers, including our first responders. If this decision goes to a public vote and fails, we will not be able to increase our budgets in those areas for years, which would greatly impact our ability to improve our city. It would hurt our recruiting efforts as we would not be able to offer competitive wages for police officers, which in turn would become a public safety issue. We fully understand the state of our economy and know the impact the nationwide inflation has had on our families here in Topeka. The last thing we want to do is to increase taxes while our families are already struggling. However, the proposed increase above the RNR is crucial at this point in time for our city. As mayor, my proposal is to have our elected officials decide on this policy with our constituents in mind, as they do with every decision they make. Our promise as a governing body is to be transparent with how we operate and the efforts currently being made to cut costs in our departments to help offset the burden on our families. If the ordinance introduced by petition and referendum is not passed, that does not mean we will not seek public input on the matter. We will hold public budget hearings, some of which have already been scheduled, and one this week was already held on Monday, to hear how the public would like the money spent. So we've heard public comment. Thank you for indulging me for my comment as well. You've heard the city attorney give us our options. As the chair I'm sitting, if I hear nothing from the council, then we will move forward. Okay? We'll move on now to agenda item number five, non-action items. I'm sorry.
I do have a comment.
Okay.
No, thank you. I was going to wait till announcements, but this seems like the right time before people leave. I support non-action this evening, and I just want to explain why. Let me be clear. While I have concerns with this specific petition and its validity, I agree with its message. This petition is the voice of the people expressing their growing frustration with property tax rates and the real-world struggles current rates create. We, as a collective body, hear you loud and clear. I feel I can say this tonight because I have a record, since I've been on this council, of introducing property tax reduction rate measures. Some have passed, some haven't, but we've had the conversations every year since I've been here. I've voted against budgets that did not lower the mill levy. I have even voted to stay revenue neutral. However, binding the city to the revenue neutral rate or requiring a public vote every year before the budget process, as this petition requests, without an ability to make changes, handcuffs future budget decisions, including our ability to continue investment in public safety and infrastructure. There are significant legal reasons the petition is concerning. Some of those have been discussed, but the revenue neutral rate is a state law that the city had to adopt to adhere to that law. Because of that, the revenue neutral rate ordinances are administrative and cannot be challenged by petition under state law. Also, the petition asks for the city to conduct elections prior to revenue neutral hearings. However, that exceeds the city's authority under constitutional home rule and cannot be validly passed by a city. However, at its core, while the petition is looking to address the problem, it only touches the surface. We, as a city, must initiate real property tax reform that factors in the complexities of the system and touches on all levels of government and taxing authorities. Otherwise, our actions may feel productive in the short term, but actually don't create any change in the long term. I have put forward some steps that we've discussed at previous council meetings and that I've posted online that would bring forth actual property tax relief to all Topekaans. It includes steps by the city, but it also includes things we can do to bring in the state and the county and efforts we, as the capital city, can push for to bring forth to make change for everybody. I've been working on this issue for a while, as many of the rest of you have, and I know that we, as a collective, will continue to do so. I believe while this petition may not be valid, the message it carries needs to be heard by all officials throughout Shawnee County, and I hope they join this city's efforts to change the system and reduce property taxes for everybody in Topeka. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Further, before I move forward? Okay. The next is agenda item five, non-action items that the Madam Clerk will read.
Is discussion regarding an ordinance introduced by Deputy Mayor Christina Valdivia-Akala concerning trees in mobile home parks.
City Manager.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Deputy Mayor Valdivia-Akala will take us to this item.
Okay. We do have one person signed up for public comment. Would you like to hear them first? Okay, proceed.
Okay. I would like to have John Chardine come up for a little bit to touch on some nuances of this ordinance. Obviously, you know, there's not going to be a vote tonight, but this is something that we all have heard about for any number of months, and that the catalyst for it was a very problematic mobile home park in North Topeka. And so after talking with constituents there, talking with Councilwoman Hiller at length, PMU, city attorney, et cetera, the move was to craft an ordinance for what I can only say are oftentimes very vulnerable mobile home parks with issues of trees and safety on their properties and, at times, safety to life and limb. So we've been working on this for some time. I know that constituent Paul Lastly, you know, has really been pushing for it, but as I told him, these things take time. It's not just something that you write up and it happens. It has to go through a process. So, John, Director Chardine, I'm wondering if you can just go over the basics of how this is going to work, so that folks listening in will know that maybe, you know, living in other mobile home parks that feel vulnerable in this particular way, and so that the governing body can have a better insight into this particular new ordinance.
Sure. So like Councilwoman said, this would address mobile home parks only. And my staff would respond to a call of possible trees or limbs that present an issue, a hazard. And we are prepared to contract a licensed arborist to respond with us, consult our inspectors as they evaluate the tree or limbs or branches, and decide that if this is a true problem, if it is, we will send notice to the property owner, give them a chance to abate the issue. If they cannot abate the issue, we are prepared to obtain an administrative warrant and abate the issue ourselves through the contracted arborist. All the abatement costs associated with the abatement itself will be at the responsibility of the property owner.
So thank you for that. And I think that what, almost how I consider this is coming under the wing of changing our culture of property maintenance. Oftentimes, mobile home parks are very vulnerable and are left out of particular segments, you know, historically of different ordinances. But what this does is it will bring them into the fold for these protections. Now, does that mean that we're going to be spending all types of money with this? No, it's not, because what we're looking at is the proactive component in this, just like we are with changing our culture of property maintenance. As Director Chardine and his crew and other departments are going out to inspect multifamily dwellings, and Councilwoman Hofer has, you know, has just had her whole foray into this, is that what we are trying to do is change up the dynamic of business as usual for shady LLCs, for that accountability. Whoops. Okay. Land the worth, I get it. I get it. There it is, versus drum. Okay. So anyway, it brings, you know, it brings that accountability mechanism to them. By the same token, when we're looking at changing our culture of property maintenance, going into these multifamily dwellings and going, look, things are going to be changing up. People deserve to live in safe and decent housing. And so eventually, we hope to get to that point where you're, you know, that intensity of what you're doing now, what we're doing as city departments, isn't going to be as much because that change in the system will be occurring. So by extension, this is also what we're looking at. And we know that, you know, we need to keep costs down. We need to be intentional about this. This isn't going to be a reactive ordinance where our guys and gals are going to be out all over the place. These are intentional actions. This is an intentional ordinance for problems that we know that we have had in some of the worst mobile home parks in the city. So I know it's just discussion time right now. I do thank you, Director Chardine, for all the work and Amanda, City Attorney's Office, that everybody has done, just for full transparency, where, you know, we're going to contract out for it, right?
Correct.
Because forestry, you know, is not going to be involved in it. So this is discussion tonight, if anybody has any questions. But I hope this has been an adequate explanation for when the vote comes around. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, bringing this up. I wasn't aware of a lot of this. You said that we heard a lot about it, but I don't know anything about it. So I was kind of curious if you could update the public and us that don't know anything about how these issues come to fruition and what the kind of timeline it would look like in the sense of them getting it abated. So I would be thankful if you could give me a little explanation on that.
Sure. Our normal nuisance violation, we give the property owner 10 days to address it. We're always welcome phone calls and requests for extensions based upon the circumstances surrounding the issues involving the property owner. We can give those extensions. I'd probably say 30% of our abatements involve an extension one way or another. So we're always willing to work with the property owner. I can't ever think of any time where I've actually said no for no good reason. So it's 10 days plus mailing, so you're probably looking at a two-week, 15-day period that we expect some type of action to take place because our core values are the people themselves are occupants. So we demand a safe and secure environment for them to live. And this is going to address that head-on.
And just to be clear, just some action taken could be them responding to you and say, "Hey, could you give me 60 days to take care of this for XYZ reason?" That's sufficient action?
That is, if you show me a game plan, a contract signed, some type of movement toward abatement, I'm open for that.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm kind of looking through here kind of quickly, so I don't know if it's in here. So on my property, if you cite me, my property, for, let's say, for grass that I didn't cut it, you write me that letter, and then you're not going to write me for the rest of the year. You're just going to go ahead and bill me. Does that happen? Because this gentleman owns a complete trailer court. So is that with each individual lot or whatever they call it, person there? Or is it, will he get the same type of notice?
That's very specific to our weed and vegetation ordinance, and that's, state statute is only requiring one letter per year per parcel.
Right.
I am going to change that to a letter every time because I think the part of change of culture is to certainly notify our residents every chance we get. I promote communication between my inspectors and our occupants. In order to get buy-in, they have to trust us as much we trust them.
Okay. So it's not in here like that, and you're going to change it, the original? Which, I agree, it used to be like that. Every time, you got a notice. You got a notice.
I'm just not going to change it halfway through the year. That's not fair. So I'm going to wait till next year.
Okay. I think that's a good change because a lot of people, for whatever reason, they say they don't get it or they don't get it, you know? And I think that covers us as well. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further, Councilwoman Hofer.
How, who determines, say a tree is, got a couple of dead limbs. Who determines what has to actually be cut? The arborist? Or can the owner do the minimum? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out how it works.
The part of the contract that we're going to have with the licensed arborist as a consultant part, and he's going to consult and decide exactly what needs to be cut back to make it safe. So if he decides three branches need to go, then that's what the order is going to demand. Three branches will be removed. Nothing more than what the arborist suggests.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. As I said, we do have someone to speak, Mr. Paul Lastly. Mr. Lastly, that's your mic up there. Special one just for you, with a flag and everything.
I don't understand when somebody says something that reflects a public safety issue totally. Our trailer park specifically, on April 30th, almost lost my grandson to a tree that was marked "Trim" by an arborist. Some of these arborists, they don't work for our benefit. They work for the tree company. Whoever they're working for is the money. It's all about the money. It's not about our safety. They've been in there cutting trees, but they cut them out of the common area in between, in between the two roads. Nothing to do with the trailers whatsoever. They've been working their butts off doing that. They even cut down a pear tree that had no relevance to safety anywhere today. It is mind-boggling. When I go to the, where you get your license renewed, you know, I'm perfectly qualified with 40 years' experience. When he asked me, "What do you need this for at your age?" You know, I'm 82. I said, "We've got overgrown trees, you know, where they shouldn't be, and the kind of trees that shouldn't have been planted in the first place." He said, "Well, I can't give you a license." He said, "We don't top trees. It's bad for the environment. Doesn't cool the air." You know, 10 acres isn't going to change the climate one whit. And yet, I was refused a license because of that. It's just mind-boggling that it took my grandson's life, inches, within inches. 2,000 pounds of tree comes down, and, I mean, it was, if anybody watched the news today at 5:00, it showed exactly what happened. It's just all the way through the house to the bottom, just that quick. And he's still saying, and you know, this LLC shuffle that they do? This Eric Yon, he's in California, you know? And the only thing that he had to say was, "Well, how's the boy feeling now?" You know, "He's traumatized." That's all I can say about that, you know, and I appreciate everything. Christina Acala, Donna, and Miss Miller. Yeah, I can't thank them enough. But it took that, I think, to really wake people up to something there because this is, I don't know about the other trailer courts. I've never lived in other trailer courts, you know? I wound up with this one because of my kids. You know, I'm out of time.
No, you still have a minute, sir.
Another issue, when they do this LLC shuffle to try to get out from under legal problems, like every time I go to court, boom, they shuffle somebody else in there, you know? And I probably should take this guy to court. But I was hoping that the whole problem would be resolved this way, you know? And maybe he would understand, you know, that we're not really trying to punish him, which I think he fully deserves, but try to do it through the council, you know, the right way. That's all I, you know, and I don't know why people could come in from, this guy was refused to do business in Lawrence. You know, he tried to pull a fast one on them, their trailer courts, and they said no. So that's, I...
Would you like more time, sir?
Pardon?
Your time is up. Would you like more time?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Would you like more time?
That's all I, that's really all I can say. Can be pretty, I'm really grateful. We're all grateful. Everybody at a trailer court, you know, is thanking me. I said they should be thanking, thanking Ms. Acala and Miss Miller. And, you know, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Move on now to non-action item for discussion. Madam Clerk, 5B.
B is Discussion Regarding Renewal of Franchise for Kansas Gas Service, a Division of One Gas Incorporated.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the governing body, Amanda Stanley. Our city attorney will take us to this item.
Yes, this is a renewal of our franchise fee with Kansas Gas Service. Franchise fees are very long in Kansas. It's a 20-year term, but it allows reopeners every five years, so we are at that five-year mark. This franchise was reviewed by our Directors of Planning and Development, Utilities, and Public Works to see what pain points we may or may not have had over the last five years to see if there was anything that needed to be renegotiated. They all felt that the franchise ordinance was good in its present form, and it did not need amendments. It does keep the franchise fee set at the 5% of actual gross receipts. That seems to be pretty standard across our state to have the 5%. This, again, continues to allow reopeners every five years as well as changes at additional times if there's a public safety reason or some other reason that we would need to modify this. And I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilman Duncan.
Couple things. State law caps the franchise fee. Is that correct or is that not correct?
I do not believe that state law...
I'm not having any increase tonight. I'm just asking.
I do not believe that state law caps the gas franchise fee at this time. However, there have been proposals to do that.
Okay. But so then does it dictate the 20-year term and the five-year reopeners, or is that...
I believe that is ours, but I will double-check that.
I guess I'm curious why it's 20 years, and if it's 20 years, why the reopeners are every five years as opposed to three years?
I can double-check that. It's just discussion this week and get back to you before action next week if that would be okay.
Because I know that, I know every, same thing that applies to gas and franchise fee law, state level. It doesn't apply to electric and doesn't apply to cable and doesn't, right, it's all different. So it's not as simple as, it's not, you know, uniform across on franchise. So that would be, those couple of questions would be great if we could get those answered before next week, or before, I guess, the 30th of July, right?
Yeah.
Got some time. There you go.
Extra time to research.
Thank you.
Other questions for City Attorney? Any more discussion? Okay. We'll move on now to public comment. I have three individuals signed up. First is Asami Smith. Not online again? Yeah. I thought she was going to be here in person. Okay. I'll call her name again, just in case. Asami Smith. Okay, Al Strutman.
Mr. Mayor, governing body, good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm Al Strutman. I'm a downtown business, small business owner for over 10 years downtown now. In that time, Moberts has seen several changes that unfortunately now are starting to manifest into larger situation. The situation is directly affecting my business to its detriment. I employ mainly retirees who are women. Got some older gals, a couple younger guys. They rely on an easier pace, manageable stress, and less pressure in the workplace. These employees are dedicated to creating a unique customer experience and enjoy the positions they hold. I care for them like family. They are our family. Just this past week, in the middle of the summer workday, I was in the back room dealing with business operations when we received a phone call from a distressed customer. She's one of our regulars, comes in quite a bit, and we've been many years. Lost my place. Sorry. She had stopped in. She'd just left. She'd stopped in, and she gave us a phone call telling us that there was an unhoused individual outside begging and then was getting disturbing and doing some behaviors that she did not know what to do with and felt threatened. And according to her, the counter was, she was scared, and not only for herself, but feared for the well-being of my employees. She feared the well-being of my employees. So much that she had to call us to ask to notify the police because of how much worry she had felt about this patron, about this person outside. This is distressing to me. Situations, we have lots of minor things that go on, nothing to call the police about and do that necessarily. But it is alarming to my patrons when they come downtown. I worry about this. I worry what it's doing to my business. I don't, I don't know about customers that, you know, this is just one customer that has felt compelled to cautious. How about the countless others who've come to my business and turned back around? Or my employees who day in and day out must try to navigate for their safety. We have, we've had incidents of stuff where they've not felt safe, going in and out. Don't need to go into details unless you want to know about those, and then we can go into that. But the state of that house is getting worse, and I urge that all of you to not only be mindful, but to work to ensure we have a public safety support and visibility in addressing the situations. We need to know the action being taken to address these situations and stop progression. What has the result of the police department been when answering these phone calls? I didn't know whether to call them or not. I've had long response times from other things, and it's like by the time they get there, they're already gone. I don't know. I don't know what's going to happen. It would be easy to feel that there is a lack of presence and action. I, as an employer, am seeking tangible solutions for my customers, my employees, and the community. And I just wanted to make you aware that that's where we're at and that these things are happening. Thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Jonathan Smith.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jonathan Smith. I live on the east side of Topeka. I'm an active officer of the Central Highland Park Neighborhood Improvement Association, but I am not here to speak on behalf of our NIA. I'm here speaking as a private citizen. I understand that this evening has been very stressful, especially with budget proposals looming over the next few weeks, but we need to talk about NIAs and what we are expecting out of these organizations. I understand that when it comes to community development block grants, there are specific funding allotments and percentage portioning that must be kept in order to remain compliant with the terms of the grants. This reduction and reapportion to be determined tomorrow at the Citizen Advisory Council may or may not be a death knell for some or many of our NIAs. I'm aware that the city of Topeka has already allocated $15,000 from the general fund, but when you split that across 21 NIAs and then spread it across an entire year with the expectation that we, as NIAs, are expected to improve neighborhoods, what are we expecting here, guys? What work are you expecting us to do as an NIA? We are staffed by volunteers with limited resources, finances, some with limited mobility. We are not grant writers, and you're asking folks with no experience to come up with diamond-plated ideas for our communities. Our neighborhoods are stacked with an inordinate amount of rental and blighted properties. If we ever get brave enough to try for a Dreams project or hold new elections or do community cleanups, we have to send out 2,200 mailers. One to every household within our NIA. Just like that, poof, there goes our annual budget, year-long budget, under some of the new proposed budget ideas. What's the proposed solution? Pop-up fundraisers within a low-to-moderate-income community? Come on. Poverty has isolated and left large swaths of our neighborhoods scared to reach out for help, and their sense of community has died years ago. You are asking individuals to care more than their own landlords about properties that they have no financial interest in. We are trying to reach these people, but it's hard. We are struggling to change this culture of property maintenance because large amounts of our neighbors don't believe anyone would ever help them for nothing because no one has helped them in years. Now you tell me how we reach these folks with even less funding. You want the working poor to spend more of their free time to volunteer for their neighbors? Yeah, sure, some of us can, but times are tough. People are stressed, and asking folks to do more for less is borderline cruel. You guys have the power, well, potentially, depending how that revenue-neutral-rate stuff played out earlier. I apologize for my tardiness to this evening. You have the power to decide on your own how much to support your NIAs. Just know, just know that unless you are a high creft, you're going to have a hard time finding a group of volunteers more passionate about their community than the folks who show up to NIA meetings. But all the care in the world isn't going to matter if these individuals on limited or static income can no longer afford to help their neighbors. I've already been made aware of community members spending their own limited money to help, but that can't be the best that we can do. Prove that you care about low- to moderate-income folks. Fund the NIAs. Take some of the guardrails off. Let us help our neighbors. Get creative with the funding. It's not hard to find an extra few hundred thousand dollars for street repairs. Show us your priorities in these upcoming budget talks. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everyone signed up this evening for public comment. We'll move on now to announcements. Madam Clerk.
So next week, the July 16 meeting is canceled, and then we've scheduled a special meeting on July 30.
Mr. City Manager.
Nothing from Mayor, other than the public listening sessions that Councilwoman Hiller announced. Okay. Well, I'm just trying to keep track of where I'm going here. So we, we will have a council meeting on the 30th. Okay. It's Fiesta time. Hope that you guys will come out and enjoy good food, good, good everything. And drinks, have some drinks, and just, just be a part of the Fiesta. Ever since I was a kid, I always got excited about July. Not July 4th, just, just Fiesta time, because my dad let me do whatever I wanted to that week, so I was free-range there. Also, I wanted to say, the way to work kids will wrap up in two weeks, and so I'm very excited about that and, and to see what they've learned and what they haven't learned. And then also, we have camp this week, and so we have a lot of kids at the basket, free basketball camp. So just got a lot going on this week, but I'll be ready for a drink come, come Saturday, for real, for real. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Banks?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to speak to the public on fireworks. I know it's a hot topic that we talked about a couple of weeks before July 4th happens, but it's very clear that a lot of citizens have a lot of unrest when it comes to that. And a lot of it goes to our public inability to follow the rules of when we're supposed to be firing off different fireworks at different times of the day, not only times of the day, days, period, before they're supposed to, after. I know I just heard some fireworks yesterday, and that's inexcusable. I mean, I'm not going to get in my car and go right around the block to go find out who it is, but we have to do a better job in this next year of informing the public of what the rules are, when we're supposed to be doing it. If there's a way for us to have our, our different companies that sell fireworks around town have some signs about you, this is when you're supposed to be firing off fireworks. Now, I understand that may be detriment to their business because they want them firing off early so they can come buy some more. I get that that's probably what they'll say, but we have to figure something out because there's a lot of people who just have a lot of feelings about it, and it's, it should be a pretty simple thing for us all to come together on. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Dover?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's talk about budget just a little bit more. Appreciate the discussion tonight. It's a difficult, difficult issue, and I understand, I understand where people are at. It's property tax hits hard, it hits close to home, particularly as you cruise into a more fixed income, which I'm experiencing at this point, so I can sympathize there. What I'd like to see is, as we head into our budget session, is we're, we are forced to talk about revenue-neutral rate by the state statute. There's no way around it. It's easy to come to a night like this and vote to exceed it and go on to September, and really what's, all that's happened in the last two or three years since that statute was passed is it's given us an extra month to do the budget. Feels like we haven't really addressed the elephant in the room, and I would like to see us do that this year. And maybe you're already looking at this, Josh and City Manager, and if you are, that's great. I would like to start with a budget that is exactly the revenue-neutral rate and fund the three things that were addressed tonight: police, fire, and public works. And then see where we're at. What's left? What's most important after that? And obviously, you know, we have many other forms of revenue that go into the general fund. It's not just property tax. But I think we need to look at what falls by the wayside if we do revenue-neutral, and there's no way we're going to know that. I mean, we, we always start the budget discussions in the same way. We're projecting this, and in order to cover that, we need X mills, and then we work down from there. That seems, it just seems like we can't do that anymore because this issue, maybe we go through this year and, and don't have to do anything, it's going to be back next year. Let's face it now. Let's see what, what's it going to take? We know we're going to increase salaries for lots of people. We have to in order to keep police on the street, firefighters in the stations. What happens after that? So that's my request. I'm just one out of 10, as Mr. Duncan always says. But let's start there. Let's see what that revenue-neutral rate looks like for, for a budget, and then let's work to add whatever, if we need to add to that. What is that? I personally am not going to vote to spend another dime out of our, and whatever it is, our extra money that we've, we've got out there, because I think that may be necessary this year, and I know next year, and we're always projecting several years out, and that's, that's the job of the finance folks, but we need to take a look at where we're going to be next year with this. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mayor. I had two, one thing, but now it'll be two quick things, because I want to piggyback slightly off what Councilmember Dobro said, because I think it highlights how we can have a better conversation, not just amongst ourselves, but with the public. I think if we start with that revenue-neutral budget, and then it looks at what it looks like when you make those cuts, it, it lets us have that conversation with the public that says, this is the choices we have to make, and lets them be part of that conversation. I think when we do it the other way, we miss out on that opportunity. People don't really see what the actual impact of that is in black and white, and so I think that's a good suggestion to just, I, I think it makes for a better conversation long-term. You and I have talked about that a little bit. All right. So my other announcement is tomorrow night, there is a budget meeting in my district over at Crestview at 7:30, and I will not be there, which is rare, and I know, it stinks, because when they scheduled it, I said I could be, and I forgot how to read a calendar that day, so it is not staff's fault, it is totally on me. So I apologize to everyone. I know the reason they were coming was to see me, I'm sure, so, so, but I do hope people attend that. I hope you provide some input. I think these meetings are important. I also think, though, it's a good time to remind everybody, as Councilmember Hiller mentioned when she was talking with staff, we are then going to now spend eight weeks, eight meetings or nine meetings worth of budget discussions, which isn't just for us. It's a chance to also let you, as the public, come here and tell us what you want to see. So really, every one of those meetings also now becomes a budget hearing and a budget meeting for the next several months, so take advantage of that. I also tell everybody, every year, we all usually come to the table with some suggested cut or refinement or improvement to the budget to help keep those costs down. I also remind the public, the budget's online. Look at it. It's pretty easy to access. In fact, we've won awards for the fact that you can access our budget online and look through it. Good for us, but use that, and then tell us what you want us to cut so that we can then have some suggestions and actual direction from looking at that budget. That, that's helpful, too, so we can, as we make those decisions, understand what's important to you or not important to you as we work through that process and have that input also. The last thing is, while I won't be there tomorrow night, my next office hours are this Sunday, 3 o'clock at Fairland Plaza, so anything you wanted to say at that meeting to me if I was there, you can come harass me at Fairland Plaza at 3 o'clock. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hofer?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Hiller?
Yeah, I too would like to, I think my target every year is toward at least bill levy-neutral, if not revenue-neutral. I'm not sure the best way to get there, but I appreciate Councilman Duncan's suggestion. There are things we've talked about for a long time. I think going ahead and setting just the two-mill absolute cap this evening will push, push us to make sure we identify options anyway, and I do hope that people, sometimes it's, it's just not paying for something that maybe isn't essential, or at least evaluating that. Sometimes if, if the citizens have some suggestions on how we can work smarter and better to get things done, I want to hear those, too. It's not always just money. And then hopefully, we can all work together. Borrowing, of course, I bring up, if we can pay cash for things, we can get more done with the same amount of money. So thinking now at, at this time, some of those are kind, compound upon each other year after year, so if we can look at all of those things as we progress, I think we'll all be better for it. Thank you for that.
Deputy Mayor Valdiviakala?
Thank you. A couple of things. One, in reference to comments made with the NIAs, there was definitely challenges that we saw when the budget discussions were kicked off at one of the NIAs in my district, and there ended up being a voluminous amount of city staff, and there were two NIA folks there. This information had been given out for weeks in this particular part of North Topeka through various mediums on social media, and I think also, I think it was, it was on the news. This is not about beating any of the good folks in North Topeka, Oakland, the small section of East Topeka that I represent. It's not about beat down. It's about how do we reimagine, how do we re-envision NIAs? And I don't know what the answers are to that. I know that it's one of the issues that I brought up to City Manager. We have to think of ways to get more people coming to the NIA meetings. A lot of the folks that have historically been the strongholds of NIAs are aging out, and they're tired. A lot of people, like this young man that was speaking up, spent, I'm sure, a lot of their time volunteering, and there is a heavy price to pay for volunteering in, in the society that we live in now, because everything is about the grind, especially in LMI neighborhoods. So I am definitely, you know, open to, I'll be reaching out to community engagement tomorrow to, I do not keep up on the CAC meetings. I mean, it's, I don't, but to find out what's going on. We also know that we have about 15 additional LMI areas that have been determined after the 2010 census that are not even classified as NIAs. And so that's an additional challenge. The dollars are additional challenge, and if we don't get people to attend the NIAs, then there's a possible loss of dollars. So we have to, I don't know how we're going to do it. I just know that we have to keep having the serious dialogue and intention behind it. The other thing I wanted to say, you know, on the, on the skirts of what Councilwoman Ortiz said was about celebration of the 91st Annual Fiesta Mexicana, and I think for anyone that has historically gone to the Fiesta Mexicana or is from the community itself that has put on Fiesta for 91 years, there is no other experience like it. I don't think that unless you have been a part of that whole rhythm, that whole culture that started when people would make the malas in food in their own houses and then take it to the school ground to have these little mini fiestas, that it has now grown into something so expansive. It is the way that our culture is, one way that our culture is kept alive, one way that that commitment to volunteerism, which was steeped in so many of us growing up with Fiesta Mexicana, stays alive. Many of us have lost the language. We still keep up the traditions of Fiesta, and I would say for those that want to volunteer and have never volunteered, give it a chance. Try it, because what it does is it helps build community, even if you're not from the Oakland community. It helps create a sense of community, and if there is a time that we need it more now, it, it is now to how we extend ourselves out to one another. I cut my teeth on Fiesta. We all did as children. We didn't have a choice about if we volunteered. We were told to volunteer. We didn't get a choice on what we were wanted to do. We were told what we had to do. But from being on the Fiesta Committee, to my girl running for queen with decorating the church, to everything, there is just so many opportunities for people that want to get involved and help celebrate a beautiful and vibrant culture. So if you want to know more about all the activities that are going to be going on for Fiesta, go to, I had it right here, I had it right here. It's FiestaTopeka, I do believe, dot com, and you can get all of the lineup of activities. And obviously, we know that the kickoff will be the parade that will be happening downtown. You can check out all the hours and entertainment schedule. So thank you, Mayor.
Just a quick follow-up to both Councilwoman Ortiz and Deputy Mayor's comments about the Fiesta. I was last Saturday down there at the Mini Jamaica, and you could see the enthusiasm and excitement getting ready for the main event, which is July 16th, when the Fiesta starts. And as the Deputy Mayor mentioned, you can find out those activities, but the idea that you could get even more out of the Fiesta by volunteering even a couple, three hours down there in one of the booths or something like that, give, give some thought to that, because they can use those volunteers, much like the NIAs. The Fiesta Committee has been around for a long time. They put in a lot of hours, and they need new blood. They need help to keep that Fiesta running. So if you go to FiestaTopeka.com, there are volunteer opportunities there. And from experience, if you show up with no particular idea of what you want to do, they'll find something for you to do. It, it, it won't take long, believe me. But think about that and give it, give it a chance. One comment I want to make before we move on to the need for an executive session is I want to remind everybody about the importance of voting. Everybody's talking about it. I just want people to make sure they keep it front of mind, to make sure they're ready and registered to vote in the upcoming elections. They're important. You can't, can't give much more importance to be able to have that vote. Sometimes it's just a few votes that make something pass, or someone wins or loses a race. So make sure everybody that you know, your family, your friends, your buddies, your coworkers, ask them, are you registered to vote? Are you going to vote? Because it's an important obligation. We serve at the behest of the voters, so make sure you have that opportunity to vote and keep it front of mind. So I want to make sure that I remind everybody of that. With nothing else, there is a need for one executive session. City Attorney, if you will read, please.
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 20 minutes to discuss employer-employee negotiations relating to one or more unions as justified by KSA 7543-19B3. The open meeting will resume in this room in the Cyrus K. Holiday Building. The following staff are necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberation. City Manager Perez and any other staff he deems necessary.
Okay. We've heard the need for an executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Council, Deputy Mayor Valdiviakala moves as a second. I'll second it. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to wait. Okay. We will adjourn into executive session. We'll take a 10-minute break, and then we'll start deliberations. It's 7:49 right now. There's a need to return into executive session for approximately another 20 minutes. City Attorney, is there anything else you need to reread?
I have to read the whole motion under state law.
Okay.
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 20 minutes to discuss employer-employee negotiations related to one or more unions as justified by KSA 7543-19B3. The open meeting will resume in this, this room in the Cyrus K. Holiday Building. The following staff are necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations. City Manager Perez and other staff he deems necessary.
Thank you. There's a need to have an extended second executive session. I move that we go into the executive session. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second? Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. Okay. Any opposed? Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we will now recess into our second executive session for approximately 20 minutes. Okay, we will now recess into our second executive session for approximately 20 minutes. Okay. We've completed our discussions during our second exec, executive session. No action has been taken. No further business coming before this body. The meeting is adjourned.